Who is it? Mayor?
It's a teeny button.
Good evening, quorum being present. I'm gonna go ahead and call this City of Howe Planning and Zoting Meeting to Order. It is 6:03 PM. Citizens may appear before the Planning and Zoning Commission to address items not listed on the agenda in accordance with procedural rules as determined by the meeting chair and by submitting a public comment form to the chairman no later than the conclusion of agenda item. Citizens may address the Planning and Zoning Commission for a maximum of two minutes. The P&amp;Z Board is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not on the agenda, other than to make a statement of specific factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry, or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. Is there anybody here that would like to speak this evening? Okay, I'm gonna move on to action item number one. Discuss, consider, and act upon the minutes of the meeting for August 19th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Sharon makes the motion.
I'll second.
And Nicole seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Okay, number two. Discuss, consider, and act upon the preliminary and final plat for North Hilltop Commercial Edition.
P&amp;Z Board, the engineer has approved the combination preliminary and final plat for North Hilltop Commercial Edition. This is located at the northeast intersection of Blythe Road and Highway 75. We are expecting some major commercial activity on that corner because it will be a major intersection, really the gateway, the south gateway of Howe. So, city staff recommends approval for this combo and final plat.
Thank you, Monty. Any discussion or any questions?
Do we know what businesses are gonna be along that 75?
Well, this, no, not specifically at this point. It's being marketed to a grocer, or a couple of grocers in particular. But generally, this kind of corner is what attracts your convenience stores and your fast food restaurants and your major grocery.
Okay.
Not, I'm not promising anything, but that's what, that's what it's being marketed for.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Okay, Brandon's gonna make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sharon seconds. All in favor? And none opposed? All right, number three. Discuss, consider, and act upon the conveyance plat for La Matrix Edition, Lot 2 and 3, Block A, 20.94 acres situated in the Thomas Toby survey, abstract number 1251, City of Howe, Grayson County, Texas.
This is a replat of, some may refer to it as the old America building. And then it was Magna Fab, and now it has been Toughner since Magna Fab left. They are selling the property and reconfiguring that entire property so that they can attract some businesses to come in to not only the main part of the building, but they're selling off the northern half of that building also. There are two occupiers that have purchased that. I'm not at liberty just yet to mention who they are, but it will be a big boost to our sales tax in the future. And matter of fact, one of them has already, as I understand it, started moving things in, and I'm not sure they've closed yet, but they're pretty excited to get here. So, we're excited to have them.
Okay.
And city staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Okay, Nicole's first. Sharon seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? None? Okay, all right, that concludes all the items on the agenda, so we're gonna adjourn the meeting at 6:09 PM.
Turn this microphone on.
Does anyone have any comment forms? Public comment forms? I don't think my mic is on. I like to be heard. But it's not sounding, I couldn't hardly hear.
Mic check, mic check.
Let's see, it's not working.
Mic check.
I got a deeper voice.
Mic check.
Thank you.
Check, mic check.
Good evening, there being a quorum present, this regular session of the Howe City Council is hereby called to order on Tuesday, October 21, 2025, at 6:12 PM under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Texas. Council members, we do have a quorum, and council members present are Mr. Ingram, Mr. Price, Mr. Tyler, Mr. Woods, Mr. Whitfield, and myself, Ms. McDonald. If you will, let's stand, remove your hats and silence your cell phones as we stand for the invocation by, led by Councilman Ingram and the pledges.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, this time we can come together. Please sit in with us, guide our thoughts and our hearts, that our decisions will honor your will and for the betterment of this city. Be with us as we go throughout this, this time of growth and change. Everything we do, we do in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Now for the American flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, one and endless more.
Thank you. So we're, excuse me. The city council invites citizens to speak to the council on topics on the agenda not already scheduled for public hearing, or on any topic on which the city council has authority. Citizens may address the council for a maximum of two minutes. The council is unable to respond to or discuss any issues that are brought up during this section that are not on the agenda, other than to make a statement of factual information in response to a citizen's inquiry, or to recite existing policy in response to the inquiry. Except for a public hearing, please submit a public comment form to the mayor. I do have one. Mr. Caldwell? If you will, just state your name and who you're with.
Mr. Caldwell? No, Jeff Caldwell, with BBRT2. It's a pleasure to be with you guys again tonight. Just wanted to give you guys a quick update on some of the things we've been doing. And I think some of these we've probably gone over, but I just wanna kinda highlight a couple of these. We have finalized our purchase of property on the north part of town for the treatment plant that we're planning to put up there. We're just beginning the studies now of what that's gonna look like, and initiating permit stuff up there as well. The purchase for the south piece of property that we've been looking at is still pending. There's a few more things that we're trying to iron out on that agreement. We were thinking we might be able to close this week, but it's probably gonna be another week or two. And we also reviewed, we've been reviewing, you guys had a smoke test and a manhole survey that was done on your behalf back in 2023. We've been reviewing all that documentation. From that, we found a couple of pretty significant I&amp;I contributors, and we've met with at least one of those, I think we've met with both of them at this point, to talk them through what was going on, what we found in looking at those situations that were there, and also how to remediate that. So, we're working with them on trying to get those remediated, which hopefully will help you guys with the billing that you guys are doing right now with Sherman as well. We also just recently acquired some camera footage of a camera system study that was done back in 2019. It's only about 2% of the system, but it's pretty enlightening. We're gonna be sharing some of that with the city manager tomorrow, and just going through that a little bit. So, we'll be looking at all of that to see what needs to be done that's come up out of that camera study. There's certainly some, some issues we need to have some discussions about. The CCN application for the, for BBRT to get the CCN here is under review by city staff. I don't know if it's been completed or not, but as soon as we get that back, we've got a few minor modifications to do on that, and then we're ready to submit that and get that process underway. The, we also provided the draft transition agreement that we agreed to do, was just outlining the plan that we had for taking over the collection system as we move forward, once the CCN is approved. I know that's been reviewed by staff, I think we're getting that back here pretty quick also, and we'll turn that back around and have that back to you as quick as we can also. Also, we just wanna thank Chief for letting us be a part of National Night Out. We were happy to help out with that, appreciate being a part of that, and look forward to being a part of the Halloween program coming up as well. So, thank y'all very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the mayor comments. Howe Hump Day Networking Breakfast, the next one will be held here in Summit Gardens on Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. The annual Halloween Festival is Monday, October 27th, that's this coming Monday, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM downtown. Please visit the Howe Area Chamber of Commerce for vendor registration. I believe there's still some, a couple spots left. Next, we have the Howe Christmas Parade. That is going to be Saturday, December 13th, 2025, at 4:30 PM. And I'm gonna move on to the Mayor Brag Moment. My first brag, I actually have two, and neither one of them are here tonight, but the first one is Ms. Becky Roberts. Ms. Becky is our utility clerk, and she has received a Mayor Brag Award for her professionalism and great kindness for the citizens of Howe. And I had received a letter from a citizen, and I wanted to read it to the council and to the public so they could hear how this citizen really bragged on her. They said Mayor McDonald just wanted to take a moment to compliment the professionalism of Becky Roberts. My family and I moved to Howe in July of this year when receiving a second water bill. There was an error with the numbers. My wife went to the city hall and spoke to Becky about the issue. Becky got to the bottom of it and resolved the issue quickly and with great communication. I went to the city hall a few days later to confirm some, to confirm some of the correction findings. Becky was very kind and sweet to my children. Becky took the time to help me understand the corrections and even research an additional question I had, providing a, providing a response ASAP. My experience adds a sense of pride in choosing Howe as home, and I hope the city of Howe takes pride in having an employee like Becky. Kind regards. Well, we do take pride in having employees like that, and I would say we've got a wonderful team. But congratulations to Becky Roberts. And the next one I wanna give a brag to is Mayor Karen Southard of the city of Gunner. She's my friend and colleague. Couple months ago, Mayor Southard had asked me if I was gonna be attending the TML Conference, which is gonna be held next week, and I explained to her that the city really could not afford that. I'd rather see the city administrator and the city secretary go. And unbeknownst to me, she had signed me up for scholarship. And TML gives away 10 scholarships each year to small cities, and the value is worth $1,000, which includes the ticket for the full conference and then money towards lodging, food expenses, gas, et cetera. And so, I won. So, anyway, I just real excited about that, and I just wanna mention that because to me, that shows us that we have community leaders, leaders in our community, that we work together, and we're doing everything that we can together for the greater good of our community. Moving on to our consent items, this, these items consist of non-controversial or housekeeping items required by law. Items may be considered individually by any council member making such a request prior to a motion and vote on the consent items. One, discuss, consider, and act upon consent items which are marked by an asterisk. These items include minutes of the regular council meeting, September 16, 2025, minutes of the special council meeting, September 23, 2025, bills being paid for the month, detailed check register report, statement of revenue and expenditures, South State Bank secured deposits, September 2025, recap and standing, September 2025, accept utility easement on property 130722, and have the mayor sign this agreement. Tap agreement with the city of Howe and Paula Jean Sharp. Does the council wish to, you wanna talk about those?
Do you mind if I speak on, about the easement?
Please, absolutely.
This is regarding the Talbot development that's going on, Old Highway 6. We have to run a water line to get to that. Our engineer stated that we really need to loop it, so we had to run the water line through, or we're in the process of doing this, running it through Jones Park, and then looping it back north to 902. In order to do that, we had to acquire an easement, and I went on the CAD and found out who owns the property that we needed, and ended up in their living room, and they're awesome people. Jean and Paula Jean Sharp, they live in Sherman, and I just wanted to say thanks to them. They were, as I mentioned, wonderful to deal with, and we went over the easement. The water line going through your property is gonna drastically improve the value of your property, not that they're intending on selling anytime soon, but their 50 acres becomes very, much more valuable with that. So, they have agreed for this easement, and we went ahead and granted them two taps if they ever need them off of that water line, and that's the second item on this consent agenda is for both of those items. So, I just wanna again publicly say thanks to Jean and Paula Jean Sharp.
Absolutely, we do appreciate her. Does the council wish to discuss any of these items any further? And if not, do we have a motion?
I motion to approve.
Okay, Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ricky makes the second. All in favor, please show hands. Any opposed? None are opposed? Motion passes. Discussion items, departmental reports, Howe Police Department, Chief Sullivan.
Good evening, mayor and councilman. For the month of September, we saw a 49%, 49% increase in call volume. We have a new team member that joined the Howe Police Department, her name is Prada. She's a 14-month-year-old, short-haired German pointer. Her and Officer Lacher currently in K-9 school. She'll be certified in narcotics, evidence tracking, and article search to include fentanyl. Will be one of only two dogs in Grayson County that can track for fentanyl. We completed 121 hours of in-service. Part of that is the state mandate for all city employees to have cybersecurity malware training. Statistics for September, as I shared, we had 168 calls for service compared to 85 in 2024, which is obviously a 49% increase in calls. Overall, we're seeing a 48% increase over call volume compared to 2024. So, you know, minus what my guys stir up on their own, we're staying quite busy. We wrote 76 citations for the month, 79 warnings. Community engagement on October 7th, as y'all know, we had National Night Out. Thank you for those who were able to attend. Thank you, BBRT, for sponsoring and Sonic, to the collaboration, to our fire department, and the law enforcement agencies that were able to attend. We're already working on next year's to make it bigger and better, so stay tuned to see what we can stir up for next year. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Howe Fire Department, Chief Manay.
Mayor, council, good evening. In the month of September, the Howe Fire Rescue ran a total of 91 calls for service involving multiple fire calls, MVAs, a few grass fires, and mainly EMS calls. The fire department's been busy preparing for upcoming classes that we are doing and fixing to do. We've got those year-round going on. Howe Fire Rescue's been very busy training our members and preparing them for the upcoming months and the potential weather this winter might bring us. We're preparing them in all sorts of stuff, from ice to water rescues, to structure fires, to anything that we might get ourselves into over the cold months, that unfortunately might be heading this way. Howe Fire Rescue's done some maintenance to some of our trucks, keeping them roadworthy and fireworthy. As many people have heard, we've officially taken over our county EMS area, so that's a big thing for us, that matches our fire district. We signed a contract, Grayson County, for compensation for the area for EMS, which technically means if you call 911 and you get a Howe fire truck, you will now get a Howe ambulance with that fire truck, instead of a surrounding agency filling in. Now, there is a potential that you might get another ambulance if we are on a, another call or things like that, so don't hold me to that, that you will never see another ambulance here, cuz that, that is the potential that can happen with the call volume increasing. Our certification classes are still underway. Our last EMS personnel is doing her Fire Academy skills the end of this month, beginning of November. She'll be gone for two weeks completing her skills, and then she'll take her state test, and she will be the last one that we have put through Fire Academy, and then they'll all be dual-serted in fire and EMS. So, that's a big accomplishment for us and a big step that we took. We're still on standby for the home football games. Stop by and say hi, and thank you for everything you guys do for us. Any questions?
So, not forgetting to render under Caesar, which is Caesar's. Be proud of what you've accomplished with Grayson County.
Absolutely, absolutely. It was a huge step, a huge undertaking, and I couldn't be more proud to be able to have that knocked out and done.
Anybody else, council? All right. All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it. City Secretary, Ms. Hewitt.
Hello, mayor and council. Our permit department is now on Fund View. The permit department was the last department that um, we needed to have on Fund View. So our conversion for all departments for the whole city is now complete. And we did it in a record amount of time of eight months. So I'm super proud of all the work that myself and my department have done to make that conversion possible. Our audit documentation is complete for fiscal year 23 and should be presented at the next month's meeting. Granted, everything goes well. Fines totaling $33,582.43 were received for the month, um, for the court. $16,791.21 came to the city. This is the third month in the row that, uh, row that we have exceeded 30,000 in um, fines received. 27 warrants were issued for the month. Our code enforcement is now at the police department. And our accounts payable for fiscal year 24 is now paperless and will be paperless moving forward. Any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. All right, um, Public Works, Mr. Walker going to speak on that and then city administrator report.
Mayor and council, uh, the Public Works Department carried out 131 service orders, four meter sets for new homes, four meter leaks were repaired. Uh, they've done, uh, they spread 10 tons of, of mix for pothole patching. Uh, three main water, or three water main leaks were repaired, 12 disconnections for move outs, uh, 55 hours of mowing, three sewer main backups, and 18 disconnections for non-payment. Um, as far as the mowing goes, I would like to thank a citizen for emailing me this morning. There was some mowing that needed to be done on, along LB Kirby. And um, it's always best to email and call the city instead of just going out to a random Facebook group page and airing your frustrations because that's not generally how things get fixed. Uh, but if you'll make the phone call to city hall and you'll let one of us know, um, we will get on it. So I appreciate that gentleman for, for making that request. And tomorrow morning, they'll be mowing that section. As far as the city administrator role under development agreement planned development, of course, we have Noble Ridge 1A. Um, you see the work going on at Connections Park as they're trying to finish up. They've got a beautiful wrought iron gate around it now. MTE Fence did that. Uh, Noble Ridge 1B, 177 homes, that's under construction. Uh, Ponderosa Point, if you drive by there, you can see the dirt is being moved, uh, bringing that elevation up for the 711 at the corner. Also built the pad site for uh, Taco Bell. That's, that's uh, starting to take shape. And also a Blue Spruce Market, which is uh, Cope Equity's product. Uh, that pad site's being built as well. Uh, NRP Group is under construction with the multifamily project. That's 300 units. Um, Grace Meadows, that's the 51 half-acre lot. They've sold to Astoria Homes, which you might recognize there's a, quite a few Astoria Homes on Farmington Road. Uh, it's actually Blythe Road now that connects into Farmington. Uh, there's another Astoria development on Inlow Road out east. So those, that's a very nice product. Those are, those are really nice homes and they're going to be right on Ponderosa Road behind Howe High School in that area. So we're, we're excited about that. Uh, Hilltop Ranch, 1,376 homes. That's at Blythe Road and 75, uh, connecting to Highway 5. Saddleback has completed the first of seven homes on Bandera Drive. Our continued projects, Howe Meadows, they have formed the mud. We're still, you know, kinda waiting on that process to move forward. Talbot Estates, uh, we have a development agreement in place. So that actually needs to move up to the previous column. Um, annexation, annexation documents are on the agenda tonight for that development. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be running a water line through Jones Park or Central Park or what, whatever its future name is.
Central Park?
The mayor has said Central Park. Um, and that'll tie into Inlow Road. Uh, we were granted the CCN rights from Luella. This is a water CCN for the Talbot Estates development. Um, that is also on the agenda tonight. We've got to uh, tidy that up. Um, Centurion American Development Group, 669 homes. As they've purchased phase two and three of Noble Ridge, will continue with the mud, it appears. And they will not be pursuing a PID. Um, early stages, you know, Inlow 9698, we, we were talking to them. We had a situation where we could have taken the eat, that water line easement through their property instead of Jean and Paula Jean Sharp's property. Um, however, they really want a lot of 40-foot lots and wanted to make sure that if we put the easement through their property, that we would grant them 40-foot lots. I can't make that promise, promise, cause I don't get to raise my hand like you guys do. But 40-foot lots have generally not been something that y'all have been willing to approve. So we took another route and went to the Sharps and went that way. So I, I'm not sure how long that'll take to develop out. Uh, Astra Companies, which is south of Howe High School, connecting to Lane Drive, uh, 365 lots as it stands right now, those are 50s. Um, and we have uh, an initial Bennett and 902 Northeast Corner 180-acre project that uh, should close soon. This is a different development group that we, uh, that I, we thought, we, we'd had a meeting with before, but it did not go through. This one appears that it may. And that'll be, as I understand it, a really, really nice development should it go through. Uh, commercial-wise, dirt is being moved uh, to create pad sites for Taco Bell, I mentioned that. Seven acres on Duke Street has closed for a flex mini warehouse development that will begin in phases due to just so many water ta, uh, sewer taps that are available currently. Uh, will now begin working towards a development agreement as they have signed a PSA, which we'll bring to you to formally approve. Uh, Le Matrix Industries, which is Toughner, subdividing their product, uh, property, which is also on the agenda. And that has led to, to two new businesses on attractive land on US 75. That's going to be really good for the city of Howe. Um, the EDC is under contract for the first stage of a downtown redevelopment project. The retail development project, uh, or a retail development, development project has been submitted for the corner of Aubrey and Collins Freeway. They wanted to place a convenience store um, on that corner. However, the proximity to Howe ISD will not allow them to sell beer or wine. So we're going to take that back to the drawing board and see what else they can come up with for that property. Uh, Streets Public Works began to remove curbs on Swanner Drive due to severe rollovers in preparation for um, the summer street project. Uh, Personnel, our staff is doing absolutely great. I get compliments on them quite frequently, you know, Becky's a great example of that. Um, Wastewater BVRT is close to finalizing the land purchase. Um, we had a collapsed sewer line in front of the apartments on North Collins Freeway near Young Street, which cost us an arm and a leg. Uh, we had to contract that work out and replace the clay line with new PVC. Um, we have the CCN transfer documents and we'll be getting those to BVRT tomorrow morning, um, which will grant us our own sewer CCN shared with BVRT too and transfer it from Sherman. Uh, Water, we've had an issue with GTUA flushing their lines, causing issues down at Old Patterson Road. Um, we had a meeting with GTUA and explained the situation to them and basically told them they're going to have to find another flush point because they're just destroying some property south of, of, of that GTUA site. So they've agreed they're going to take Flush Point uh, near Dickens Road and Highway 5, in between the railroad tracks and, and Highway 5. And they can destroy that land if they want to. Uh, the mayor, city secretary, and I will be attending TML Conference in Fort Worth at the, well, next week. We'll be there, I'll be leaving Tuesday after work and be back Friday. And let's see, utility bills. Um, active $265,030.38. You know, we're, we're doing, we're doing well in the utility department. We're starting to see the effect of those homes going up in uh, in Noble Ridge. Um, solid waste. $67,231 collected. Uh, $90,118 in sewer, $112,000 in water. So everything looking, looking pretty good there. So total amount billed for current utilities, uh, $274,933.78. Number of utility bills, 1,293. And the total number of accounts and billing, I think this is a typo, 1,358. So that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to our action items, number two, discuss, consider and act upon investment report. Mr. Walker?
Mayor and council, uh, for the month of August or September, rather, we accrued $9,252.2 in interest with all of our city-owned accounts. The EDC accrued $1,678.21. Uh, Logic, our government pool is currently yielding 4.26%, while Techstar, Techstar is 4.16%. So the, for the year, we've accrued $73,095, of which $65,030 has come since we initiated our investment policy. So I think we're maxing out everything we can do for our citizens of Howe financially. The EDC for the year has accrued uh, $10,983 of interest, of which $9,213 has come since our initiated policy. Uh, the October report showed a sales tax total for the city of Howe of $62,643.52. Of that, the EDC will receive $15,660.88. So it's kinda nice, you know, we continue to see these jumps in sales tax. Um, our market is changing. Um, you know, I've been tracking these sales tax for about 10 years and every month was about the same. It was Sherman getting about 2 million a month. And it's Dennison getting about 800,000 a month. And then Gainesville maybe 700,000 a month. And then everybody else was very small. Well, now you've got Sherman about $3 million a month. And you've got Anna and you've got Salina at the top. And then you've got Gainesvilles and your Dennisons and your, and your others. So, and uh, ours has steadily improved as well. You know, when I got here some 10, 11 years ago, we were averaging probably right, we were happy when it was 30,000 a month. So it's doubled that uh, since that time. So heading in the right direction and with the boost from some of these um, stores that are about to open along 75 is going to greatly help our bottom line.
Questions or any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion to approve the investment report?
I'm motion to approve the investment report.
Okay, Sean makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ed makes that second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, motion passes. Number three, discuss, consider and act upon reappointing Dale Wright out to the Howe Community, Community Library Board. Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to approve him.
Billy makes that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sean makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, motion passes. Number four, oh, yes.
We threw you a curve on this uh, agenda. There was an item number F after my city administrator report. And the police chief wanted to give a strategic plan update.
I'm sorry.
Nope, too late, we've already passed it.
I was on a roll.
I mean, if, if, it's up, it's up to y'all. If you want him to do it next month, I'm sure he's fine with that, but he's prepared to do it tonight.
We don't mind doing it right now.
If you're ready, let's go.
Sure did.
So I hope y'all have a strategic plan that I had presented. I had the opportunity to present this to Monty and to the mayor uh, about a week back. Uh, officially tonight, uh, myself and Lieutenant Sparks, I've been with the Howe Police Department a year. So there's been a lot of change, as y'all well know, over the last year. And part of that process is evaluating our weaknesses, our strengths, and how do we push this forward now to solve problems from yesterday, but prepare us for growth. And so in that process, we started an evaluation process in the department. It looked at our assets, uh, policies and procedures, our hiring processes, our training, our equipment. As y'all well know, this past year, we made a lot of modifications to our training, uh, our equipment that we brought forward and how we moved the department forward. And so in that process, we kinda started with a ground-up approach, meaning that I spent time with my staff, talked to different city personnel, businesses, some of our citizens and got kind of a 360 approach, good and bad. Uh, took a couple of punches from, from yesteryear, uh, for people to see that things are and will be different. And so in that process, that's what pushed us forward to do our Citizens Police Academy, uh, our town hall meeting that we did and some of the other things that we have planned to continue to work with our community engagement. And so the other part that we have to look at is how do we move the department forward? What does that look like? You know, how do we accomplish that? What are our challenges? And what does that look like over a timeline? And as Monty alluded to a while ago, the, the growth dictates that. You know, if we grow faster, we have to make adjustments in personnel and training and technology. If we grow a little slower, then obviously we take that plan and we spread it out over time. So one of the things that we look at is how do we serve our community? For us, um, it has to do with response times we call or consider priority calls, which are your robberies, your domestics, uh, things of those natures. And, and you know, yes, those things happen in Howe. Uh, not very often, but they do happen. And so we have to have a plan and how we deal with that and how we staff that. And you know, over the past year, y'all have heard me, you know, fluff many a times that we don't have enough personnel. And so we kinda go through this plan, it'll kinda give you a comparison of cities our size versus how they're staffed. Um, you know, and kinda talk about how we're going to push the department forward to be prepared for that growth. And so as you see in this, it talks about 2030. That could be 2032, it could be 2035, it could be 2028, we don't know. As we all know, our city is growing and growing rapidly and we have to be adjustable to do that. Uh, part of my strategic plan is trying to utilize technology versus personnel. So let me kinda allude what I mean by that a little bit. You know, hiring people, we have to pay salaries, benefits, all those fun things when you can sometimes use technology to deviate some of that cost. And so what I look at is how do we use technology to save money? Meaning that if I can spend, you know, 40, 50,000 on technology, yes, that's a lot of money upfront, but I'm not paying for two or three officers, which is several hundred thousand dollars. So that's how we look at that and then we look at how do we deploy it to make our community safer? So... As y'all kinda look through here, you know, I'm not going to get way down in the weeds, but it talked about how we looked at building a strategic plan. We looked at building it from an employee approach. As you've heard me say many a times, everybody that works here with the exception of one is invested here. They moved here, they live here now. And so they care about not only how the department moves forward, but the citizens that we serve. Uh, I purposely try to hire personnel for that because it makes them more engaged in our community. Uh, it has them more committed versus, well, I can leave and go to Sherman and make more money, or I can go down the road to a bigger department. When you have people that commit to move somewhere, you know, they have a little more buy-in because it's not just a, like, back up and move again. You know, as we all know, that's not cheap. Uh, and it's very time-consuming. The other part of it is, is it engages your community engagement. If I move to live- If I move to live somewhere, then obviously I'm invested in what happens here. And so, for our personnel, that is where we're at today. And so, as we move to look forward, what I have to look at is how do we not only attract that talent, but how do we retain that talent? Uh, working with Monty and the mayor, and with y'all over the past year, we were able to get some of our technology deployed. Uh, we were able to create a pay-step plan, and although the pay-step plan may not be competitive with the big cities, it is a good foundation for us to build from, and it's allowed us to attract good talent, all of which y'all have met. Uh, and I've talked about a little bit how we changed our hiring process. And so, November the eighth, we will do our first testing. Uh, we use Bannon Associates to provide a police entrance exam. Uh, they also will have to do the road meter test. Uh, and so, we have created a process that we believe is not only competitive, but ensure that we hire the best tech, best people, uh, that we have, and utilizing our technologies and our pay structure to attract that talent. The next part we look at is how do we manage them? So, you know, unfortunately, over the past year, the policies that we put in place, um, are able, are able us to catch deficiencies. Those deficiencies unfortunately left to us to have a complete hundred percent turnover, and so, they work. But they work because we put accountability measures in place. So, for all our sworn personnel, they do over eighty hours of in-service to come work here. That includes our policies and procedures, specific legal things. As you see, we have an online learning management system that gives them access to over three-hundred different courses. And so, what I have to look at is how do we keep our staff trained without breaking the bank? Because the way we're structured right now, if someone calls in sick, we replace them with overtime. If someone goes to school, I gotta replace them with overtime. And that's not uncommon for a small department. So, what I look at is using a learning management system, how to get that same training without having to pay all that overtime. So, we have our own learning management system. Uh, the officers have choices to enhance their training and specific skills, because every officer has their own little niche and what they like to do. So, the other part of that is, in our training, is, you know, as we push forward to go through accreditation, uh, we're about sixty percent through the process of submitting our documents. As I showed you before, it's one-hundred-and-seventy-four best practices. Uh, Monty stopped by the office the other day, I kind of gave him some insight of what that looks like of submitting these things. It's very tedious, uh, so it's not just, oh, it's one-hundred-and-seventy-four best practices and you hit submit. Out of that one-hundred-and-seventy-four best practices, each best practice may have anywhere between three to fifteen types of documentation that we have to submit with each one of them. That can be showing them where they have read it, acknowledged the policy. It could be specific training. It could be, uh, looking at one of our reports, and then these reports have to accomplish certain things. Uh, so, one of the things, an example that comes to mind is that we have a use of forces. Our policy requires we call for medics, make sure they're evaluated. We have to have a, a report that shows a use of force report, and then in there, we outlined that we call EMS for an evaluation. All those kind of things go into each one of these best practices, uh, for us to push forth the accreditation. Well, it also is a way for us to internally, as I manage the organization, to catch officers who are maybe either overzealous in use of force, uh, or overzealous in how we affect arrest. So, you know, the technology that we have with our software, uh, our best practices is how it keeps us to defend litigation, and it's that technology that helps us doing that versus having to hire a person to constantly manage the reports and documentation and things like that. And so, as we push forth, one of the things I have to look at is how do we get the right mix of personnel, meaning the right number of officers, versus non-sworn personnel? What does that look like and how we serve our city? You know, obviously, having a major highway like Seventy-Five creates its own challenges, uh, because of the amount of accidents that we have, the type of accidents that we have, uh, the type of criminal element that uses the highway to come through here. Statistically, we were starting to see that they're using five in some of our back roads to, to get off the highway. So, you have to look at all these different strategies, and we have to train our staff accordingly to be able to deal with it. Utilizing our technologies such as license plate readers that we have, have up here in the next couple of months allows us to be able to track these offenders as they come through our city. As you may saw in the news today, we had an incident over in Van Alstine that originally initiated in Carrollton. It was the technology that Anna, that allowed us to be aware that this person was even in Van Alstine or Howe, and we spent the last day looking for him. Um, you know, so that technology has proven to be fruitful, and it's minimal at cost. So, it's, uh, one of the directions that we're pushing as an organization. Uh, the chief and I and Sherman have sat down on some other technology that we might look at collaborating together, how it benefits both agencies, since we share a North City limits together and obviously the highway. So, talk about staffing. Our first goal in staffing is to try to get two officers per shift out here right away. Uh, that has to do with how the budget allows, with how we, how we're able to attract the talent, uh, but that's my first concern. You know, especially at night, when you have an officer out here by themselves, they get into an incident, we've already had two or three incidents, where it's twenty minutes for somebody to come back them up, that's a long time when you're fighting with somebody on the highway. And so, my concern with that is, is pushing us into an issue where we have a critical incident, such as an officer-involved shooting. And so, those are the things that we look at, how we utilize our staffing. So, our first goal is to push twenty-four-hour coverage with two officers on shift. So, the next part of that we look at is we look at crime trends, we look at our growth, and, you know, there's several different models that are utilized and determine the number of officers. Uh, there's one that, you know, everybody uses the two-point-five per thousand. Uh, I'm not a big fan of that, because it doesn't give you realistic data. Uh, there's a model that's used by the International County and City Managers Association, we call the sixty percent rule, and that sixty percent rule means that you have adequate personnel on during sixty percent of your highest call volumes. And so, what that means is, is we look at timelines, we look at the type of calls, days of the week, and we look at and make sure that we have adequate staff to, to cover that. If you use the two-point-five rule, it requires us to have more officers. If we use the sixty percent rule, it allows us to build our department utilizing technology and personnel. So, I know that's kind of, everybody's looking at me a little different here, like, exactly what I'm talking about, so imagine it this way. If we use the two-point-five rule, that require us to have somewhere around fifty officers. If we use the sixty percent rule, depending on how big we get in the next five to ten years, you're looking at between thirty to forty officers. So, you know, the average you can save for us, it costs us one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars for every officer we hire. So, you do the math when you start talking about ten to fifteen officer difference.
That number goes up every time he tells a story.
It has been the same the whole year. I have proof. Um, so, you know, the other part that we look at is, you know, what do we need to do? Well, you know, the first part of that is, is getting our accreditation, you know, our technology that we brought on, the vehicles that y'all have approved, and some of the things that utilizing technology. I'm very proud that we have technology that, you know, some law enforcement, no, but law enforcement agencies have in Grayson County, and we have others that were in the top one-hundred percent, and that puts us even in the big eight percent. You know, my team and I try very hard to think outside the box and look at how we serve our community and what is the most financial responsible way to, to do that. So, if you, I don't, y'all have these packet, the packet of the presentation, you know, packet? So, if you look, we had an organizational chart that shows today that we have six officers, including myself, and kind of what that looks like. In our build-out, the way I have it is going to 2030, like I said, it'll be 2035, it'll be 2040, would put us somewhere around twenty-nine officers and thirty-three one. So, what that looks like is, is you would have two to three officers a shift and a supervisor. Uh, we would have a dedicated traffic unit, because we're running into more and more issues of being able to get to some of these regs, even Fire and I have had some conversation, we can't get apparatus to some of them. So, we're looking at, you know, doing a motoring unit at some point, um, they're able to manipulate through the traffic much easier and faster to, to get to a scene. Uh, we already have one dog in place, we're looking at adding a second dog, but it'd be a little different kind of dog. And so, in the, the police world with animals, you're either narcotics, tracking, article search, or you're narcotics, and we call a dual-purpose dog, which means you're a bite dog, is what we commonly refer to. Uh, we're not there for that need yet, uh, but as we continue to grow, and we see a different element move to our city, it is a good, um, encourager to be compliant with the things that we ask, and at some point, you know, over the next five to ten years, it'll be a tool that we have to have. So, you know, in closing, kind of look at what we're trying to do. We're trying to look at how we recruit and attract the best personnel. We're looking at what technology looks like to move us forward, uh, the things that y'all have proved to this point gives us a great foundation to build from, uh, as we continue to move forth with our staffing growth, our main priority right now is personnel. Um, you know, I've done this for thirty-one years, this is my fourth department as a chief to come in and turn around and rebuild, uh, and I will say candidly, y'all have made this the easiest. Uh, part of it's through collaboration and support, uh, because the end result is, without y'all's support, we cannot accomplish our goals. So, any specific question that you might have? I tried not to get too far in the weeds, but...
Like, he talks about, he talks about money and then butters us up.
I might ask him for money tonight, don't worry about that. I'd have to get a fan over here from Monty if I started asking for money.
How is the, um, how's the, the, the vehicle replacement program?
So, one of the issues, and it's a national issue, it's not just an issue specifically to us, uh, for police vehicles, you're looking at twelve-day, eighteen-months to get them. Uh, we're hovering already at the twelve-month, or twelve-month mark, and we still don't have them. Uh, that was part of the reason of looking at going in a different, uh, direction. One, because it's safer, two, we can get vehicles faster, uh, but it's like anything else, you've got to get ready to do that transition period, and that's kind of where we're at. We do some things that I think put us ahead of everybody in some ways, you know? We have gun cameras, no one in Grayson County has that. To me, that is worth its weight and go to help us negate liability should we have an officer-involved shooting. Um, you know, we've got brand-new body cams.
Explain that for just a second. Because I, I was at the PD shortly after y'all got them, and you showed me the video of y'all at the range. Explain what you mean when you say gun camera.
So, our officers have a specific-made holster, uh, for our department-issued weapons, it has a camera on it and a flashlight. So, when that officer moves that weapon out of the holster, that camera instantly kicks on. When that officer extends out to his target, a lot of times, our body camera footage now becomes obscured because of the extend-out. With that camera on the end of that gun, they get to see it from that officer's perspective, and the video that, that, uh, camera on our gun is clearer than our body cams to include the audio. So, if we had an incident where we had to have an officer-involved shooting, you know, our citizens and our, you know, the court will get to see that first from the officer's view, instead of partially being obscured through his body cam or car cam. To me, that is invaluable, because it's a way for us to negate liability to protect our city. It's a way to have clarified evidence as to what took place from the officer's perspective and to why he or she may have made that decision. Uh, it is the second time that I have deployed that technology, and I will tell you from personal experience, it is worth its weight and go. In 2021, I was involved in a shooting with a robbery suspect, and that video made it very clear what happened. So, that is one of the things that I think puts us above and beyond. Uh, we have great body cams, we have great car cams, our car cams have license plate readers in them, we have had a couple of incidents where we've been able to knock down some stolen cars, uh, we've had some wanted suspects pop up on them. So, we're trying to utilize technology to encourage people who want to do nefarious things to go somewhere else. You know, for a small department, I think we are showing that we are going to be the leader in technology. And, you know, as long as y'all give me the privilege to drive the boat, that's the direction I want to go. You know, I, I've got other agencies asking why or how we're doing, you know? I just don't believe in doing cookie-cutter things. I'm more of like, let's hook the water bucket and see how it goes. And, uh, I've been very successful to do that, because I try to put a lot of thought into it, I try to get the input of my staff, obviously from y'all, uh, because at the end of the day, if something goes awry, y'all are the ones that's going to get clobbered for. And so, that's why I try to be very transparent and be very vision as to what we're trying to do as an organization. Anything else?
I just want to say that all those upgrades have been since Chief Sullivan has been here, so good job.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
And I apologize for missing you earlier.
That's okay.
I'm a creature of habit, I was on a roll.
Well, I just didn't want to get too, I mean, I didn't want to get too deep in the woods, there's a lot of statistical data in here, there's a lot of processes of how we kind of got here, but the end result is this, and this is what I would say in closing. I'm very confident to say by February, we will be an accredited agency. Uh, we will once again raise the bar with technology that we will move us forward when we have our license plate readers put up, um, and that technology would allow us to make our city safer. It allows us to use it for investigative purposes without necessarily having to have man-hours to go chase things down, and, you know, when you deal with people who choose to do nefarious things, sometimes time is the difference. So, thank y'all for your support.
Thank you, appreciate you. Okay, I will start with action item number three now. No, wait, Matt. Action item number four.
We approve, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there is that?
Okay. Action item number four.
I lost cap.
Discuss, consider, and act upon ratifying a transfer of two-hundred-thousand from Techstar reserves to the pool fund, and transfer three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from Logic wastewater facility to pool fund.
Mayor Council, we are at that moment of the year where things are very, very, very thin, before the ad valorem starts rolling in. So, we had everything hit at once on one billing cycle last month with the GTUA, uh, one-hundred-thousand dollars. We had our sewer bill, which was a hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Uh, we had that, uh, collapsed sewer line that cost us an amazing amount of money, so we had to, uh, move some money from our reserves and from Logic to cover those expenses. Uh, so, we just needed to ratify that, and, and the goal here is obviously to move that money back once the, uh, ad valorem starts rolling in and we can get back on track.
Any questions or discussion from the council? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll motion to transfer the funds.
To approve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Sean makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chad is making that second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, motion passes. Number five, discuss, consider, and act upon library services contract with Grayson County. This is something pretty standard that we do every year.
Yes, ma'am, this is kind of routine. It's, it's similar with the EMS contract with the county, this one's just related to the library.
Any discussion from the council? And if not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Ricky, I'm going to go with Ricky. Ricky made a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ed makes that second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, motion passes. Number six, discuss, consider, and act upon preliminary and final plat of North Hilltop commercial addition.
Mayor Council, as mentioned earlier in the P and Z, um, the North Hilltop is a preliminary and final plat, they were gracious enough to not put us on the shock clock, but I don't think we'd have had any concerns anyway. Um, this is a prime, prime area for big development for us. So, they're just trying to replat it so they can, uh, you know, they're, they're going after a grocer, and not that we'll land one, but they're trying to make room so that they can at least go to the grocer and say, hey, we're replating this for you. So, that's what this is about.
Any discussion from the council? And if not, do I have a motion?
I'll motion to approve.
Billy makes that motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ricky is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed, motion passes. Number seven, discuss, consider, and act upon retail water service area transfer agreement with Luella Special Utilities District.
Mayor Council, this is, uh, for the Talbot development, this is for us to obtain those, um, the CCN along Old Highway Six, there's about twelve lots there that they had rights to. Uh, we've made an agreement with them, they've released those and transferred those over to the city of Howe. Uh, we just are papering it up now, so if we approve this, Luella will then take it in front of their board, and we'll be able to wrap that up.
All right. Does the council have any discussion on this matter? And if not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept preliminary, uh, the final plat.
All right. Ed makes that motion to ex- Ed makes that motion to accept.
I'll second.
Billy makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Number eight, discuss, consider, and act upon conveyance plat for Lematrix Edition, Lot Two and Three, Block A, twenty point ninety-four acres situated in the Thomas Tobe Survey, abstract number one-two-five-one, City of Howe, Grayson County, Texas.
As mentioned earlier, with the P and Z, this is a replat of that property that used to be Old America, used to be Magna Fab, currently is Toughner. We have two businesses going in there, once they are able to replat this and close on that, it'll be a big, a big sales tax producer for us.
Does the council wish to discuss this item? And if not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Billy makes a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second.
Sean, I'm going to go, Sean makes a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. Ordinance number eight-thirty-nine, ordinance annexing territory. An ordinance, ordinance, can't talk tonight, annexing the here-and-after described territory for the City of Howe, Grayson County, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of said city as so-as to include said here-and-after described property within said city limits and granting to all inhabitants in said property all the rights and privileges of other citizens and binding said inhabitants by all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of said city and adopting a service plan, property G-C-A-D, property ID one-three-zero-seven-two-five, G-dash-zero-nine-two-five, Park W-A, A-dash-G-zero-nine-two-five, acres forty-five-point-four-eight, plus or minus geographic ID two-four-one-zero-nine-two-five-zero-eight-eight-five-one-four, Old Highway Six, Howe, Texas. Monty, do you wish, you want to come up maybe and just talk about this before we go into public hearing?
Well, this is just the annexation of that Talbot property along Old Highway Six. This will be able to not only bring them into the city of Howe, but it also extends our ETJ a half a mile out from this property as well, so it's very beneficial to the city of Howe. And I'd like to thank the developers for agreeing to do this. Initially, they just wanted to plat through us and not annex and go through, you know, and be in our ETJ. We were able to strike a deal to run a water line and annex them in, so I'm proud of our city staff for being able to accomplish that.
Absolutely. We do appreciate them. All right, now we will have a public hearing for ordinance number eight-thirty-nine. It is now open for the public to have comment or questions. Anyone? Okay, then we'll close that public hearing, return to regular session. Number nine, discuss, consider, and act upon ordinance number eight-thirty-nine. Does council wish to discuss this any further? And if not, do we have a motion? Ricky is making a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I second.
I heard Ed second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None are opposed. Motion passes. And I don't think we have our special guest here. Okay, so we are, since we, we are not going to have to, need to have an executive session this evening, so we will not have that. We will go down here to item number ten. Discuss, consider, and act upon any items discussed in executive session. Clearly, we won't need that item either, so no action taken. If there's no further business to come before this council, this meeting stands adjourned at seven-thirteen PM. Thank you all, and have a good night.
Did notice it was much quieter with no motorcycles going by.